Good evening and welcome to the No Foolin', April Fools'. April 1st School Board Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And, Ms. Towne, do you have someone to introduce?
All right, so tonight I have with me two incredible young women who are representing our performing arts programs. Eighth grader Zoe Mulholland and seventh grader Caroline Morris. We had our spring concerts a few weeks ago and this weekend we will have our world-renowned performance of Mary Poppins Jr. So it just felt like the right time to highlight our performing arts students. So I'll say a few words about Caroline. Caroline's a seventh grader and she has played the trumpet since fourth grade. She's also dabbled in some other musical endeavors such as piano. On March 10th, she attended the New Hampshire Band Directors Association Middle Level Honors Festival at Pinkerton Academy where she was joined by other talented middle school musicians from across New Hampshire. This was an audition-based festival that heard auditions from students across the entire state and Caroline was accepted into the highest-level performing group. This is akin to being nominated to an all-state team for an athletic team. At the festival, she rehearsed for several hours and concluded the day with a fantastic concert with some of the best middle school musicians in New Hampshire. Caroline is performing her musical debut this year as a chimney sweep in Mary Poppins Jr. With her strong dance background, she has been a wonderful addition to the cast this year. And Zoe, our eighth grader Zoe Mulholland, has been in both chorus and the drama club since fifth grade. She is a strong leader in the chorus and earned the lead role in BMS's musical Mary Poppins Jr. She's been nominated for the Southeast District Musical Festival in May where students throughout the southeast area of New Hampshire come together to perform a concert with a guest conductor. The students involved have been nominated by their teacher for leadership, musicianship, and the opportunity to expand their musical repertoire. This is a great honor and she's going to represent us well. On a personal note, Zoe also had a solo in the concert a few weeks ago and her solo literally brought me to tears. It was so beautiful, so. So, ladies, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Girls, congratulations. Zoe, best of luck next month. I know you're busy. Just thank you both for coming up tonight. We just have a little.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And good luck at Oister River next year. You know we'll continue to hear great things. Look forward to hearing what your plans will be, won't you?
Thank you.
You're free. So I think we have at least one amendment to the agenda.
Maybe two, depending on how you want to do it. It's more of reviewing, I think we should do two.
Yep.
Doesn't necessarily fit in the tax cap part of my report. So, one, if we want to do it right after the first public comment, to have the board review the letter that came from Fair Funding, potentially to sign off, sign in joining other districts who have done the letter to Governor Ayotte. And then also to add a non-public at the very end of the meeting. We do have new legal guidance around non-publics in that if you are discussing more than one item, and we do have one item that we need to discuss from a special education perspective, that you do two separate forms and list your items and your reasons separately. So we do have new forms tonight, so they're nice because they just walk you through the process so that we're not missing anything. So the first one would be, where's my sticky note? There it is. And then the second one, 91A32A.
So moved to make those amendments? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from March 18th.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Look how quick we got to you, Peyton.
Okay, so I have quite the list. And thank you to Mr. Baker for helping. There's a lot of stuff going on in the school right now for spring. So, once again, I'm from Oister River High School. I'm a junior there. And so I'm just listing off some of the things that are going around in the school right now or that have passed in the recent weeks. So, spring sports started last week and the spring musical is coming up. There is SAT testing for juniors and PSAT testing for sophomores, April 9th. Seniors have the stay off while the freshmen go to various college tours to UNH, Southern New Hampshire University or other community college in the area. Quarter three ends Friday and counselors are meeting with each individual students for courses for next year to help plan their next high school years. The College and Career Fair is on April 15th, about 100 programs attending the Career Fair between four-year colleges, two-year colleges, military programs, and trade programs. And Barrington Course Registration Night was last week for incoming freshmen where they got to choose their courses for next year. And then prom is on April 19th. And that's all.
Busy few weeks coming up at Oister River. Any questions or comments for Peyton?
You did a great job.
And have fun at the prom if you're going.
Thank you.
Where is it?
It's at the NVO in Portsmouth.
You're free to go. Thank you for coming, Peyton.
Thank you.
Dan, do you have a select board update for us?
Not much of a, not much of a report to give you. We reorganized like you did. And we'll get the assignments, our committee assignments, our liaison assignments Monday. The School Board, Select Board Meeting, Coordinating Meeting is this month. April 14th, I think.
24th.
24th coming up. Other than that, library is going to get, library is going to get new computers sometime this week. They basically all failed. They were going to hold out to the new building, but all their computers have failed. So if you're having trouble getting into their computer system at all, that should improve in the next several days.
Question to me?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, so that brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. As always, we'll start with those here in person. And those online, if you put your hand up, we'll know that you want to contribute. Anybody here want to contribute? All right, look at that, folks online, how quick it came back to you. No hands? Moving on. All right, so the review of the letter about Fair Funding.
So in your pockets I put, just so you could see the districts across the state who have signed on already. I think it's as simple as if you choose to either do it as a board or as individuals. It's mixed across these different districts of who has decided to do what. Clearly an individual decision. Doesn't have to be a whole, you know, whole board decision. And for people in the audience, the letter itself is by the public pockets. And we will repost it included since we added this.
Yep. So, for me personally, I'm happy to sign it either individually or as a board. So I just look to the board members, if there's anyone who would prefer it to be individual and not as a board, we can do that. I don't want anyone represented if they don't want to be represented.
I strongly support us signing, but I also respect, we are also individual members. And so I, if we choose not to sign as a board, I'll be choosing to sign individually.
Likewise.
I'm okay with it either way. I'm just, it's unfortunate Garth's not here. I hate to say that we do it as a board and he's not here to make a decision for himself, but.
Well, I will say 80% of the board has said we want to sign it, so I think.
Well, and I think we could reach out to him and ask him separately. It looks as though the people who have signed on as full boards have still listed individual board member names. So, I mean.
Need a motion for that?
I think that's really your individual decision making.
Sure, if you want to make a motion that we, you know, that we're going to sign.
Make a motion, we sign as a board.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
So I will reach out to Garth since we were listing everybody's names to make sure that he has a voice in that, in that piece.
Will there be a person respond back to the Fair Funding part, Michaela, the project?
Yeah, it's actually an active doc, so I will, the districts are added in tabs. So I can just add Barrington, respond back to her, and list everybody in there.
Thank you. All right, Transportation. Do you have anything else?
I don't have any additional presentation for this evening, but I'm happy to walk through it with you guys, answer any questions, cover anything that you need to cover.
I'll say thank you for this. This is what I was looking for last week.
No problem. I did send it home with you last week. Did you have that?
Yeah, I saw it in the thing, but I was kind of, like I said, this is, this is what I was looking for. Madam Chair, if I may, you know, there's, there's a pretty significant cost between STA and First Student in the fact that if you're just doing regular education over five years, it's $965,065.80 difference between them two contracts. Obviously, specialized transportation for a student is $222,821.78 less. So, going with option three, which is my preference, it will save the district an average of $148,448.80 a year. Looking at the way that the, the concerns we have with budget and some of the things coming down from the state and the feds, it would be, I think it makes the most financial sense to stay with STA for regular transportation and go with First Student for specialized transportation. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, at least for the topic of discussion.
So my question is, it's certainly substantially more for a student, but I know it's a, this is a hard question to answer, but we don't know what we're going to get for that, would get for that increased cost until we did it, if we did it. But you've talked to both, you've worked with STA, Bridget, so I don't know if there's anything you can, and the recommendation was for a student, so I'm curious if there's a little bit more, if you can expand a little bit more on why and what we're going to get for that.
I think the first piece that, with regards to the larger buses that comes to mind is that we have been budgeting for 14 buses, 14 big buses, and we have only been running on 10 because they haven't been able to give us more buses or drivers with STA. And so even with projecting 12 buses, I still have concerns that STA won't be able to meet that inventory in terms of buses or drivers. I went through today to calculate the driver shortages that we've had over the year. And I just want to double-check 510. So far, we've had 19 days where we've had additional, so instead of having our 10 buses, right, or 12 buses, we've additionally had 19 days where we've had a driver shortage, which has meant that either we've lost a run at the middle school and at Co-Brown or beyond that, we've lost runs in the morning or at the elementary school, which has prompted emails to go home asking families to participate in dismissal or have kids wait till they leave us. So, there is a concern there on the districts and that we just are concerned that they still will struggle to meet the inventory need that we have. So I think that was a big consideration when we sat down to evaluate all of the bids was, was really considering, are we going to be able to meet the needs that Barrington has? It is worth taking into consideration, if we were to split between the two companies, does that free up some drivers potentially from STA? I would think that it would. I am just unsure about inventory-wise. My communication with First Student was that, well, and we spoke briefly about this, they would never not run a route. That doesn't mean that they wouldn't combine routes, right? But it wouldn't be that they would say there isn't a route and parents need to pick up kids. They assured me that they would find alternative ways to make sure everybody had a bus home. And it sounds like they have just a greater depth of systems for hiring. And, you know, I think they reported they had nine drivers currently in process for regular ed buses and five for special ed, so they seem to have a greater kind of bullpen for folks that are coming up through the process. I went back through my notes and with STA, we, Deanna and I met with their team on August 21st and then we met with them again on the 19th of September and really focused on some short-term goals with regards to staffing, with regards to updating the routes, with regards to decreasing that 35-minute dismissal window over at the elementary school. And I'm not sure that we have met any of those goals since the early fall. And that, well, that significantly impacts the building level and families. So I think we took that into consideration as well.
Again, I'll go back to when we look at the uncertainty, we've all agreed as a board, there's a fair amount of uncertainty with federal funding and state funding. It's, it's pretty much a foregone conusion that we're going, we're going to lose funding. And when you lose that funding, you've got two choices. You're either, you're either going to put it onto the backs of your local taxpayers or you're going to cut services. And you look at, I certainly don't support cutting services. And I don't support cutting staffing. But we're faced right now with what we gave for a budget and what the voters approved. The school is looking at nearly a $1.50, a thousand increase in our taxes. And, you know, to add a substantial $700,000 increase, I'm not sure you're going to get $700,000 worth of better services out of the other company. I think it's a product of the times and that not necessarily people jumping up and down to want to do, to drive buses. And so, you know, I read through the contract and the way that you have the contract set up, that's as if they don't meet the requirements either side, then the district takes money away from them. But, again, you know, looking at the taxpayers, I just, I struggle and I can't support a $700,000 increase over five years. $150,000 a year could be better spent either doing curriculum upgrades or, you know, we've cut programs for maintenance programs because we're trying to do everything we can. And we have an opportunity to, the money's there in the budget. If we go with option three, you know, it frees up 140, whatever I said, $148,448 to, for the district to use in other places.
So, I definitely agree with Rick about the serious concerns about the cost. But just playing devil's advocate, I also want to say that transportation is highly visible, legally mandated, and dependent upon by a big chunk of our district. I don't, I'm not saying that, anyone is saying that that's where we cheap out, but I don't only want finances to be a factor because I think, even though I know none of them probably are going to be perfect, continuing to work with a company that we've had significant issues with in number of places concerns me to then sign another contract with the hopes that we cross our fingers and things will just get better. I don't think that that's really how things happen. And we, as coming from a parent in the district who has suffered from not having reliable busing, I can tell you that it is incredibly disruptive and I'm lucky that I can be available to pick up my kids, but there are a lot of children, a lot of families that aren't, and it's incredibly disruptive. So I, I'm not sure if it justifies the cost, as Rick was saying, but I do want those things to be said, that I have some serious, serious concerns about continuing to work with a company that has just really, really fallen short in the past. So I understand why you would recommend another company.
Could we, if we're ready, make a, make movement on the special education side of transportation and then?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor, yeah, true.
If there's not a second, then it doesn't move anywhere and then we can entertain a different motion.
Is it, before we, is it possible for us to just make the decision on just special education for now and?
That would be the most pressing of the decisions because we have to start planning routes for summer programming.
Do I want that?
Especially where that's such a high-dollar item and especially where you don't have the full board here for something that is so significant. I am interested to hear Garth's thoughts as well, so I, but I understand timetables, so if we, I'd be happy to entertain this, the special education first so we can just at least nail that down now.
So are you making a motion for one of these companies?
I don't know if I'm allowed, I don't know if, is that, does that work?
Well, if there's no second to, then that, that motion is, we don't vote on it because there's not a second.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure we're, I wasn't out of line.
We could entertain another motion, a different motion.
Well, I mean, I'll make the motion for, to approve First Student for just special education services and table the general ed until the five board is convened.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that?
The hope, my hope would also be, I have to imagine, if not live, eventually, transportation reps are watching this and I would like to, before we decide on the bigger ticket, more substantial item, because it is certainly, there is a very big discrepancy there. Curious of the thoughts of STA on what we are saying tonight and what, where they can go from there before we make a final.
I just want to clarify, the special ed transportation is actually more expensive than the regular ed transportation. It's the bigger ticket item. Bigger number of buses for regular.
Yeah, and I would like some feedback about, kind of, so we've tabled it twice and I'm unsure about what you would need in order for us to make a decision because we've given both parties quite a bit of time to deliver what they need to deliver in terms of the response to the proposal. Both parties watched the School Board Meeting. Both parties had the opportunity to attend both meetings. And so I'm unsure about what I would go back to get for the next meeting and, and am growing increasingly anxious. I'm very grateful that we just voted for special education because we have summer programming, but we're bumping this likely to May now and we need to get buses, physically order buses to move into New Hampshire too. So I just am looking for feedback about if we do table this, what more I could get for you. I'm not sure that STA can give us information that I don't already have for you and equally from First Student.
It's not reasonable for either one to come back. They've put, they've put bids in.
Right.
And you can't, this can't be a back and forth thing. I think really what this boils down to is, is that, you know, the decision of the five of us making a decision, I think we have to look at what's been presented to us and we have to, we have to make that decision. Again, for me, it's a no-brainer. I'm not going to support a $700,000 increase. I just don't think that the service from one company as opposed to the other is going to be worth that much money. That's, that's my opinion. I mean, I think, you know, we're here to make sure that our kids are adequately educated and, but we also have a responsibility to make sure that we're using the taxpayers, all of the taxpayers' funds wisely. And, you know, there's somewhere around 35% of the kids that don't even ride buses. So when you look at the amount of money we're going to spend and a pretty good chunk of these kids don't even use the service and that's because of, for whatever, there's choices of the parents or whatever, and I'm okay with that, but.
My concern is they're not using it because it's not accessible and it's not running well currently. I mean, 35 minutes to do a dismissal for elementary school students makes me concerned that parents are opting out for that reason. I hear you. I just want to point that out.
So to be clear, I teach in Dover and First Student is the carrier there and it can be 25 to 30 minutes for them to come or even longer at some of the other elementary schools. So I don't know that that is specific to STA. So I don't want to give the public that impression. So, yes, I think in all the buildings it should be shorter, but, you know, there's a lot that goes into those bus runs that are outside the driver's control and traffic and, you know, whatever. But, so we have a motion and a second about adopting First, for special education. So let's take that and is there any more discussion on that, special education? Awarding it to, you awarded it to First Student. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, so, tell me yes or no, we have Transportation.
Yay!
All right, so. If there is a motion to, you motioned to table.
I did motion to table, but I understand what you're saying and, yes, they're not, we're not like doing a back and forth where they're going to be coming in and shaving off any money off the top. So what we have is what we have. I just hate that we're in this position where we're having to go, potentially work, continue to work with a company that I know has been, first of all, a lot of backend frustration for administration of time and energy spent in just managing that relationship and still not getting the full commitment. So I just, but, but I also have a hard time swallowing that, that cost. I mean, that is.
I appreciate the meetings, the two meetings so far. I hope those can continue. I hope they, if, whoever the transportation company is, they want to meet with us and make sure that we're doing what we can and we're making sure they can do what they can. So no matter who it is, I hope the relationship is positive and collaborative and communicative and we're working towards the common goal of getting our kids to school in a timely way and a safe way, so.
And I'm going to be a little more blunt because I've been on the board 15 years. It's been a perennial problem and I don't have kids riding the bus. But, you know, in past when we put out bids for transportation, STA was the only one who submitted a bid, so it really was decided for us. I'm hoping now that they see other people are interested. So it really was decided for us. I'm hoping now that they see other people are interested in our business. You know, I hear that other districts have STA and they're fully, they're fully staffed for their bus runs and I don't understand why we're short and other districts aren't and how they're deciding that. And so I'm hoping this will serve maybe as a little bit of a wake-up call if they're watching that their service has been unacceptable. And, you know, if we decide to go with them for regular ed transportation, if it doesn't improve over these five years, I think it'll be a very different story. Like, we've been patient and understanding. We understood during the COVID years, but it is unacceptable if we're saying that kids two towns over cannot get home from school. And I understand too that we are not legally obligated to transport high school students. That is not part of the RSA in our lovely state. We don't have to transport our kindergarteners either, but you know, we do. So, you know, but I, I have found their service unacceptable and I have found them to be less than responsive to their lack of providing the service that they have a contract for. And they seem to think it's a benefit that they don't, we don't pay for the buses. Well, I'm not paying for a bus that you haven't run, so.
Right, and routing, right. I have deep concerns that it took until November 7th to receive accurate, safe routes. So I just, I hear you.
Our town is, you know, while population not great landmass-wise, pretty big. So, you know, I think, you know, it can be a challenge, but I would think after the years of running buses in this town, that could have been much quicker and smoother, that, you know. But I am not a bus driver and I appreciate the job the drivers do.
Of course. None of these comments are directed at them.
But I think, you know, if, if they continue to perform that way, I'd be loathe to support anything going further.
I mean, so then what, I mean, do we want to then make that determination now and have that discussion about the general continuing to stay? I mean, it's just such a huge price.
It is a huge price thing and we know we can't put it in our default.
Right.
And so that, you know, that savings in our general budget next year would allow us to make some improvements. And I don't want to sacrifice that on the backs of students not having rides home, but I also think it's worth, that's a significant amount of money that...
I mean, then we can make, I mean, I'm fine with making a motion to approve.
Back to your original motion, Rick.
Right, that, sorry. Rick, you want to back?
Rick can do it, Rick can do it.
I'll go to my original motion to...
Well, we already did the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. So to, so to regular transportation to go to STA.
All right, I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for your work on this and your continued work with transportation. Nominations.
You want to just?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion to accept the nominations for the '25-'26 school year.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for your service.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, school board meeting scheduled for '25-'26.
I know, it seems early, but this is when we do it each year. So basically took the meeting schedule that we've pretty consistently done in years past and put together the upcoming schedule.
Make a motion to accept the school board meeting schedule for the '25-'26 school year.
Can I, well, I just want to have some discussion on that.
I'm sorry.
So when I first started here, we met on a different day of the week and then we had a board member who was a challenge and so we moved to Tuesday. And I know Tuesday is a challenge for you, but may not continue after the summer.
Not even, not even summer. Not even going to make it this summer.
It's fine for me, it just...
Night, the particular night doesn't matter to me. I don't, I ran for school board with the understanding that I would meet when we're supposed to meet.
Your Tuesdays are on.
That's right.
Is there anyone that a different night of the week would be better? Tuesday's fine for me.
Tuesday's been driven.
Okay, then, is there a second for Rick's motion?
Second.
Okay, all those, oh, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
No, not.
So it is Saturday. You just, everybody said aye.
What?
I said Saturday.
Oh, Saturday?
Oh, I thought you said Tuesday. To keep it Tuesday. Oh, okay. It's like, what did we just say?
He voted, he made a motion for this.
Deanna threw up when I said Saturday.
And then the same thing with the budget timeline. We, so this, for this cycle, we just completed this year. We had added back in quite a few meetings as the previous year was a little bit too lean. And, you know, next year, who knows? There may be a lot of discussion needed, dependent on what happens legislatively, but also there may be much less discussion needed because we are not making any, you know, major decisions because we other, you know, by adding funds necessarily. So I stuck again with the schedule that we had done this year. I know that there was a little bit of discussion while we were talking that there was only one full day dedicated to an actual budget workshop with no other items on the agenda and didn't know if you all wanted to add an additional one as opposed to, you know, budget lines just being on an agenda in upcoming weeks.
Yeah, I think it's this, this meeting, it was just a lot of lines and a lot of the budget all at once. So I think, you know, breaking that up a little bit.
And considering the concerns I have for, even though I think that it's, it's very positive of you this, this far back to think that maybe we won't be able to make, have as much control. And that's in reference to that letter that we were just talking about where the spending cap would mean that we cannot move our budget at all more than 2.5%. So freezes us in time, which would limit greatly what we could discuss, but not for that first year. I mean, that first year, we would have to seriously talk about what we're cutting.
What we can, what do, I mean, to be, more to say, to be blunt, I mean, there would have to be some significant cuts.
And so, and that would be a discussion that I think would warrant more. So while I don't think we might always need a lot more time, because I know not everyone's rolling their eyes at me because I'm like asking for more time, but I do think that we might want to consider adding something in now for a buffer day and then if we don't need it as time gets closer, that's fine. We can always remove it, but I'd rather have it on there so that the ABC is prepared and we're prepared for potentially having a meeting where we're really talking about making some hard, really hard decisions and I don't think those should be done in the same avenue as us talking about line items. So, you know.
Maybe like this, the summer ninth in here?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea. All right.
So we have an October 7th regular meeting where just the initial overall presentation will happen. Do you want to take, so are you looking to add a meeting or?
I don't know, I mean, let's discuss it.
Or also do less in, on that 21st meeting?
I'm fine with either. I just, yeah, I'm fine with either. I'd love to hear from the rest of the, of the board for sure.
There's three October meetings, so we, we could take the 28th and have it be a second budget workshop with no other items and, and split up. Because 11 hundreds, 12 hundreds, 21 hundreds, 26 are all, that's where all your content is, right?
Right, right. No, it's fine. What were you going to, were you going to say something?
No, that's fine. Or I thought you were thinking maybe move some of them up to the 7th and split them up that way too, but...
Yeah, either, either way.
Yeah, if you use the 28th, the regular meeting and turn that into a budget, primarily a budget workshop meeting unless you absolutely had something we had to discuss. And then if, if the budget was moving faster and we could, you know, we're not adding a meeting unless we had to somewhere.
Yeah, it's just so tight, it's just too tight. Yeah, so I think maybe, I think that makes sense.
Well, and does it make sense to move maybe a couple of things that are on the 28th down to the 4th if we're going to move some from the 21st to the 28th?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so if we make the 28th a second budget workshop and then I can look at those lines and redisperse them.
Okay, so do you want to bring back that at the next board meeting?
Unless you want to just amend to the 28th and...
Well, how about if we amend it to say the 28th and we'll leave it up? We'll give you the latitude to move whatever we're going to review. You can move that around. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that works.
I'd make that motion.
No second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hope we don't need to.
I think we're already talking about the next budget.
I know. It comes so fast though.
All right.
And then I'll also adjust the ABC's timeline. I just included those pages. You had approved those from last year just so that you could see them. I feel like having their participation early worked really well.
Yeah.
Right.
For sure.
So, all right. Believe it or not, next thing we have to decide, because people's schedules start to fill up in the summer quickly and we sometimes bring consultants in and trainings, et cetera. We're hoping to get the administrative board workshop session on the books. We did it in July last year because it gives us an opportunity to wait until we have all of the academic achievement results as opposed to doing it in May when people are all still, you know, running buildings and maintaining, trying to contain spring fever and such. So I feel like the July date worked well.
Plus typically we have one meeting in July, right?
Exactly. So right now that is scheduled for, I was just looking at it, what was it? Like the week after. No, I think it's later.
It is that week, 14th to 15th.
Oh, yeah, so I didn't realize we put it on there, tentatively already. So the regular board meeting would be the 29th. Actually, I was going to propose we do the 16th, the Wednesday, to give people time, administrators time to come back from some already planned vacations so we would have more time to meet on the Monday and Tuesday to be as best prepared as we can. If people are agreeable to a Wednesday.
Okay, so we're amending this thing we already voted on.
Yep, I didn't realize that date was on there because I had it there to be discussed tonight. That's my error.
Okay.
Okay, circle back to make a motion to amend the...
I make a motion to amend the school board meeting schedule from the first meeting date, the Tuesday, July 15th, to say Wednesday, July 16th.
All right, any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, for the second time voting on the board meeting schedule, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now that it's on there, we don't even need it separate, but there it is. I don't even, can't even explain why, but this packet had like a curse over it. Every little error that could have happened has, and we'll get to some of those as we continue along tonight. All right, so I think I'm up next. Yes, I'm just going to keep talking. Okay. So hiring personnel, that hasn't, we have not added to that list, thankfully. We know that sort of that additional round of potential people who are making choices happens when contracts are due. The teacher, I should say educator now, contracts will all go out on April 11th, due back on the Friday before the break begins, April 25th. So we have one interview process for curriculum coordinator set up for this Friday. Committee convened to review questions and such. And then we actually are starting to get a decent applicant pool in some of the other positions right now. Woodworking, tech ed, not so much, so we may have to come back around to do kind of what we did with computer science and look at, all right, what are the needs of our students? Do we offer a different UA because there just aren't any candidates out there? So Elizabeth and I talked about that briefly, so we know we need to come back around to that.
Don't bring back those scary robotic babies. They're possessed.
I think we still have them in a closet, actually.
It's like the ice cream place that has that, like, the creepy dolls.
I walked in the room and they were all charming and I was like, oh, you're...
We do have a good handful of applicants for the counselor position, so that is nice. And also we want to make sure as we are posting positions that internal candidates have an opportunity to request a shift if they so desire. So, and that is a new item. It's been in the paraprofessional contract for a few cycles now, but it's a new item in the new educator agreement starting in July.
I had a question about the substitutes. When was the last, do you know when the last time? Off the top of your head, sorry, but that we increased, we reviewed the salary, the hourly rate and made a change?
Just last spring, I believe.
It was last spring, okay.
Yeah, we looked at nurses and subs. And I feel like our rate is still actually quite competitive. We came up quite a bit.
I just cannot remember. The years are blending together.
Agreed. But we can, we can jump in and look again to make sure that other, it always happens every time we do an increase, there's such a shortage, other people then increase. But we're, we continue to struggle with subs.
Well, and we should have that information when we're going into our paraprofessional negotiations because that's always been a perennial problem too, is if we're upping that and we can't have our substitutes getting paid more than our district employees who are providing invaluable service.
Yep.
Yes, and we had that discussion when we did that last year. Yeah, absolutely. So we will look at that again to make sure it's not off-kilter.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, back to here. I think we're still status quo as far as the current budget is concerned. Nothing major new has happened. That, again, we don't have capital reserve accounts to offset. We're continuing to approve purchases that we would need to uphold, you know, student activities, progress, all the regular things. We're just asking people to be a little more mindful and cautious on things that they could potentially do without until the spring, until the spring, until the start of the next year. So just being cautious, not saying absolutely not, just being cautious. We have, our next policy committee meeting is April 17th. You know, as soon as you come up with a process, a couple of years go by and your process then is old and tired and you need a new process. So in the committee, Bridget will review sort of an update on the here and now and not necessarily a new approach, but it's taking us a considerable amount of time to get through each folder and of course every time there's, you don't say, yeah. We feel like we're chugging along and then we get, you know, a policy update from NHSBA.
It's 25 pages.
Yes, way too long. And each policy within it is 30 pages.
There's 10 references.
Extremely important, in-depth policies. So what Bridget has done is gone through every folder to say, okay, what's not even on the NHSBA policy manual currently? What can we, instead of going folder by folder and rescinding, what can we, let's clear the clutter, right? In one fell swoop. So we have a nice approach for the upcoming meeting on the 17th.
Oh, we love rescinding policies. That would be a great, that would be a great, that would be a great meeting.
Well, this committee is meeting again on the 10th. We are still waiting for Dover and Oyster River contracts to come back signed from the commissioner to make those official as our continuing to schools of record. Teacher contracts, so it's on the leadership team's agenda coming up to really pour through that to make sure that we are on top of all of the language changes. This is certainly one of the most significant changes that the contract has had in the years that I've been looking at it. So we want to ensure that we are covering all our bases and not falling into sort of the, what we've known over the years and making sure we do everything that is in there. Portrait of a Learner, have we done any recordings yet or we're getting ready to?
We have, we have started in our building.
So exciting. So I can't wait to see this. It will be exciting stuff. So we got all permissions back, so we'll have somebody, a student from every grade level to sort of overwrite the script, right? So there are actually Barrington kid voices and Barrington photos. So it's not a stock, you know, state Portrait of a Learner video. So that is coming soon. It'll be a nice addition to our website there. And like Danan said, our next town collaboration meeting is on the 24th. And I also added to that, thank you, Rick, because I was pouring through my notes, that the last meeting we had talked about not only sidewalks, health insurance, regrouping on the letter we got back from the state saying, no, you can't have your speed zone signs on 9 and 125, but also having a conversation about putting them on Malago and Ramsdale. So we will attack all of those on the 24th. We have had two behavior task force meetings at this point, so Bridget and I have a little like work to do as far as compiling tier one... so Bridget and I have a little like work to do as far as compiling tier one and two strategies, so that we can really get to the heart of the tier three concerns that we have going on. So that is coming up. We meet again next Monday, and then we're three Mondays in a row at that point. There is so much going on legislatively, it's hard to capture it all. So I did put a pretty big list in the report. I will highlight a couple of them. Removing the income limit for school voucher eligibility is on the table. So I've already talked about that, with the impact that that has been on us currently. And so if the income level is removed, I would anticipate that will be a larger financial impact. This one is certainly causing some big question marks for people. Right now, there's a House bill out that will allow the department to issue subpoenas directly to certified educators and administrators. And really, the message back has been, you know, that's really not necessary, because we are, oh, I mean, I'll just speak for myself. I'm always forthcoming, as we should be, when the department calls and wants information. So we'll see where that heads. Additional concerns around default budgets. You know, as soon as you think you understand what is allowed to go in a default budget, they throw something else on the table. So we all know that we've just started kind of feeling the pinch of an inability to hire particular positions. It is a much larger impact in bigger districts, as you would imagine. And so now, there's a House bill saying, oh, if you have an unfilled position, then now those are just coming out and can't be part of your default, which is really unnerving, because those are positions that we need to support students, and they're there for a reason. Just because we can't find appropriately certified staff doesn't mean they're not necessary. So people are certainly concerned about that. Another large piece is the parental bill of rights. And not that parents shouldn't have a say and a voice in their students' education, for sure. However, there's some of the wording there is making people feel like, yikes, I'm gonna have to be really super careful, and it's making me nervous of what I can and can't say and do within a school day. So we'll see where that lands. The Senate Finance Committee has already recommended the passage of SB 295, which is a universal school voucher bill. So allowing people to basically take their money and go wherever they please for school. So we'll see where that lands.
Which would make student projection for population.
Oh, it's impossible.
Impossible, absolutely impossible.
Yeah. So for us, their larger impact would be, you know, the high school projections. To a point, we would have to decrease dramatically before we would make major changes within our pre-K to 8 population. But wow, it's already challenging, as it is to, as we know, this year, we're 15 students off in high school. So that would just become an even faster-moving target. And Carrie, you alluded to it a little bit ago, the state mandated budget cap.
Which includes grants. I just want to add, if we receive a grant that pushes us over the 2.5%, we cannot accept it.
And it also includes your capital reserve account.
Oh, I didn't capture that part.
Yeah. So if that happens, we may really want to look closely at the facility projects that we have upcoming and use the money now. Because otherwise, it detracts from the allowable money that they consider that revenue and funds that you have on hand, that you have to, you know, expend before you're allowed to then apply the 2.5% or whatever the percent ends up being. There's a lot of conversation out there around how that's even going to be calculated. So it's not a, it's not going to be a flat 2.5% across the board. It's like a formula for each local district.
A formula that they have not distributed yet.
Exactly.
Why would they want to encourage you to save money and put money aside, like every responsible person does, but, so...
Yeah. So, yeah, I just feel like when I talk to people lately, I'm just sharing all kinds of scary, potentially bad news, but that's, you know...
She went up there with Joe this week.
Well, and it, we're just, all of these boil down to, just, just because I have to say this, it's less local control. So you're voting for school board members, you're voting for local members of your community to represent you and to represent the tax dollars that you're paying. And we already have such a significant, like, we don't control a significant chunk. And this is despite voters across the state of New Hampshire voting against things like school caps and things like that. They're continuing to move forward with them, and I just find that very disappointing. Get off that soapbox now.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm hoping this is going to be one of those legislative seasons that we all take a sigh of relief at the end and go, shoo, that didn't happen.
Yes.
But we'll see. It's concerning when you get the readouts from NHSBA when next to all these bills, it just says, ought to pass, ought to pass, ought to pass.
I've never seen so many ought to pass, ever, ever, ever.
There's a lot of traction right now that we have to be mindful of. So we all know, thankfully, our lovely voters passed our budget for next year, so it will be the upcoming budget process that will potentially have an impact for the '26, '27 school year. And I'm gonna just stop sharing potentially bad news.
Well, not happy, no.
Not good news for a lot of us.
All right, you guys have a dog in the house.
Was this April Fool's, do you know?
You know, that's...
Unfortunately, those aren't April Fool's.
So I mentioned earlier that it was just sort of that packet that didn't come together well. So what got posted and emailed to you? Elizabeth had convened a homework committee, and then sometimes Gmail, like, nests things and that, anyway. So there was a, last month's principal's report was in with that homework proposal, and those two things got printed, as opposed to her actual current April 1 report, but you do have that in front of you.
So I did think that was an April Fool's joke. But we figured it out.
We figured it out.
So I have a lot in here that's additional to the normal principal's report, so I apologize for the lengthy discussions that may ensue. But it's all important and could have a big impact on kids. So enrollment currently, actually, when I wrote this report, it was 409, but we did add a new sixth grade student, so we're up to 410, a nice even number, with an additional student in sixth grade. Attendance is holding pretty strong from my previous report. MTSSA, February to April break, a long stretch, but tons of instructional learning time without a lot of interruption, so we're just rolling ahead with that. Report cards went home last week, and we've begun our final rotation of academic success. We've gone back to math instruction, and the whole school is focused on fractions this go-around. MTSSB, April is decision-making month, so we're going strong with that. Our newsletter will be out at the end of this week with our March Students of the Months included. And we'll have our next Battle of the Bulldogs. Typically, we've been doing sports and athletic events, but this time around, we're gonna have trivia competitions at all four lunches for Battle of the Bulldogs, so that'll be exciting. Have a lot in here for progress towards school goals. I won't read it out word for word, but I do want to highlight some important discussion that's been going on. At the beginning of this year, for the first time, at least in four years that I know of, we made department-based or content-based goals, rather than just school-wide database goals. So it's provided some opportunities for department colleagues to get together and really talk about what they need as a department. We do that regularly with ELA in math, but we haven't really done that with science and social studies in the past as much. So that's been a great opportunity. So our ELA goal, they actually already achieved for iReady at the mid-year. So we're hoping to kind of double up for that by the end of the year. And I do want to take this opportunity specifically to shout out our eighth graders. I know we've talked about historically, eighth grade kind of falls off of iReady, but they just nailed their mid-year iReady, both math and ELA. So I'm hoping they can hang on and do that again in June, because, like I said, typically, we see eighth graders kind of losing the buyout and just, you know, getting a little bit apathetic with iReady. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So great job to the eighth grade. Math hasn't met their goal yet, but it's a year-long goal, so they're on their way. And I've broken it down by grade there, so you can see where each grade is performing for math. The science department is focused on trying to get some hands-on practice with SAS science questions. There's a variety of ways you can do it. We were hoping to do it right in the module, right in the SAS platform. We ran into a few tech difficulties early on in the year, but each teacher has been able to run SAS practice, even if they print out the question and hand it out old-school style or print out the SAS tickets like they will. But we just know from other schools who are achieving well on SAS that the more those students see those questions similar to the SAT, you know, the more they're used to the question type and figuring out what they're asking, the more they can show their content knowledge, and it becomes less of a question skill. So we're working on that. Social studies, I attached their specific data as well, just so you could see, you know, that they're writing. I think it's great that our social studies teachers are supporting some of our ELA goals with writing in that curriculum. Special ed had some amazing growth in iReady. At the time, I was missing one grade when I, when I wrote this report. But, so their goal was based on direct reading instruction. 80% of special education students will make growth. And all but one grade so far has made that growth, has exceeded that growth. And two other grades or programs are 11% or less away from doing that. And that, again, was at the January mid-year, so really positive data there.
What is the growth? It just says they'll make growth?
Yeah, so whether they're in the red and going up to yellow, or in the yellow and going up to green, they're growing a category, if that makes sense. UA's data is incomplete. They're focused on one grade level, increasing their preparedness and responsibility, so they have to wait for their last trimester. And community events. On Friday, we had our first annual Wellness Bulldog Day, and it was just amazing. It was such a positive experience for students and staff. I heard and saw nothing but great things happening in our building. We started off with a whole school assembly with Ed Garrity, who was a speaker. I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity to hear him or see him, but he was just amazing, and our kids were so well-behaved. An hour is a really long time for middle schoolers to sit on the bleachers and listen to one person talk, but he captivated them. He was just such a dynamic speaker, and his message was so great, and the kids were into it. But it's hard to get fifth and eighth graders, like, into the same speaker, so... So that was really great. And again, they were really well-behaved. He had great things to say about our kiddos. And then the kids just spent the day rotating through, learning different types of wellness. I mean, whether it was eighth graders learning the hustle, or, you know, eighth grade boys doing yoga in the library, you know, they, they were all engaged and having fun, and it was a great academic break. All the presenters were impressed with our kids, and it really went smoothly. So a huge shout-out to Kristen Miles and Riley Boldue, who spearheaded it. I think they came to us almost two years ago with this idea, and it was just great. And they had a lot of staff who helped them as well, but, so it was just a great, great day. Tomorrow night, we're gonna have a fifth-grade curriculum fair. They have been working on a state research project across all of their classes, basically since we got back from Christmas break. So they're gonna show their families all that they've learned, and they're gonna have some trifolds and magazines, and that's gonna be an exciting event. And on April 24th, our seventh graders are also going to have a curriculum fair based on the book Refugee. Again, that they've been doing some work as a whole grade on that. A community event from today, we had our eighth graders pull a very positive, but fun April Fool's joke. So at their UA time, instead of reporting to their various UA classes throughout the building, the entire eighth grade went to the gymnasium and played badminton for a few minutes. And it was good. But once they were told to go back, they all just went back, and it was great. So it was fun, no hurt feelings, no destruction or anything like that, so good job, eighth grade. Athletics, spring sports signups are happening this week, and our tryouts or first practices will begin next week, hoping the fields are dried out by that point. All right. So now for some of the heavier stuff. We've got our Washington DC trip scheduled for next year. So I have included in here, in a letter that I wrote to the board, kind of just giving you guys some information on where we are at with that. And I'm looking for some clarification or approval for, in a few, few different areas. So in early March, I started sharing information with BMS families about our 2026 trip. I've got the itinerary in here, as well as the cost breakdown and structure. I'm hoping that we've given, we're giving families ample time to start thinking about the trip and saving, if they decide they want to do that. There are still limited funds left in the Civic Education Fund that was created for that first post-COVID trip. However, it's my understanding that the fund was created just because of the quick turnaround for that first trip, and I don't recall that it was for widespread funding of the future trips. So I was just looking for clarification from the board on the use of those funds for, or not for, these trips.
Can, can you just look at how the Warren article was presented? Because it's how the voters decided, so it would be based on my understanding, but it was a couple of years ago, that it was to be used as need.
I actually think it's a little vague.
It was written for use on civics experiences. And so I think in, it wasn't written...
Which was advice from legal.
Right, it wasn't written for DC, particularly, you know, specifically. Because also, the students that don't go on the trip stay back, and then there's a coordinator that runs more local civics experiences that also have a fee. So whether you go on the trip or not, there's a cost associated with that handful of days. So it, at my recollection, and of course, we have a somewhat different board now as well, but my recollection at the time was it was, the costs went up substantially as a result of COVID and traveling, et cetera. And also, we were pulling together a trip pretty quickly, and so we limited families' ability to have that extra time to save. So we're hoping, given the amount of time, and then also, you're probably gonna talk about fundraising next, that, you know, we always want to support anybody who needs that assistance. And I feel like we've communicated that in the past, and families have come forward if they've needed either a full or a partial scholarship. So we were just making sure that our recollection and understanding was that of the boards in regard to how we want to disperse and utilize those funds.
That's my recollection.
I would just hate to see a student not go for financial reasons, that we should be able to find a way that we can make sure that a student truly wants to go, that the resources are there to make it happen.
There is, there's also the school, is it called the School Board Fund? And that's not fund, but there's the donations of our salary cumulating and are used for, and historically have been used for that, if families, even after this time, which of course is understandable, everyone's financial situation is different. If they still, after the fundraising efforts and the more than one-year notice, aren't able to, I believe that there has been a process in the past where we've discussed providing those funds. So I know that there's also a secondary way to provide support, even outside of the fund.
World Strides gives us one, correct?
$1,000.
A $1,000 towards support. And I know there's always been a couple of families who have reached out, and we have always made it happen, to allow them to go. We just used it very broadly and widespread the last time.
Because it was such a short window, and they didn't have, like, but now families and students have the opportunity to fundraise. And I appreciate that, you know, even after fundraising, some families may not be able to. But I would hope that they are at least putting in some effort, and I would think that full scholarships wouldn't be available, because they have...
So much time.
So much time to plan.
Okay. That was our thinking, but we wanted to make sure we talked it through.
But I do think, you know, it really should be needs-based, and I don't know that we ever kind of figured out how to do that, while protecting the privacy of folks, but, you know, I...
So one suggestion I had had, because we had that conversation, and I know we've looked at it with this lens in the past, is, you know, because it's confidential, only certain people in the district are permitted to know who's on their free and reduced lunch. So to me, that would... So to me, that would kind of be one layer of a criteria to say, hey, you know, we already know that there's a financial need here, and that would be sort of a starting point for determining how much scholarship and who would be able to access those funds.
And then do we, are there, I don't know how to say this, like, in a, like, politically correct way, but are there, even though we're fundraising, are there, I don't think, not every family needs assistance? I'm trying to say this. So, I mean, do, does every, when the fundraising dollars, I know you're going to speak about it in a minute, but do they, are they evenly distributed to lower the cost of the whole trip, or, okay?
Yes. Yep. So what we discussed was setting a minimum. Well, I'll just go into the fundraising. So part of my first communication to families was, or recent communication to families, was asking for parents to help organize, because I can do a lot, but I can't do all of that, too. So I've got some responses from people who are willing to help. Our plan is to run, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the cash calendars, where you take a month, and you get local businesses to donate something for each day. So you would draw a raffle on June 1st, draw a raffle on June 2nd, and maybe, you know, it's Flowers from the Dove or something that you're.
Black cards?
And so our.
I don't think a raffle has ever said no.
Yeah, yeah.
Our initial thought was setting a minimum, in order to have, to offset, you have to sell, you know, 10 raffle tickets as a minimum or something like that. But so then, we would take the profits from that fundraiser and say perhaps, depending on the percentage of how it works out, for the other trips, you know, two-thirds of that money would go to fund the DC trip, and one-third would go to supplement the civics trips for those that stay behind. And so it would just lower the overall cost, and then we would say, this is what the, because if we do it in June and the first payment is due in August, so that would be a.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. So that's, so that's the fundraiser part. And then the second thing I've included in here is a proposed behavior contract. I hate to, you know, be negative, however, we're taking, you know, between 150 and 200 students.
What could go wrong?
About eight hours away, and they are, you know, middle school students, so I've included a proposed behavior contract. I reached out to principals across the state, got some examples, and pulled one together with permission, taking from some other schools. The one that I have before you, I liked because it was looked over by Drummond and Woodson, our, you know, the attorneys that we frequently use. So I know you just got this, if you want to look it over, but I am seeking your approval on that behavior contract.
The piece about this that I particularly liked is that, and they are middle school students, right? Like, they're developing, they learn by making poor choices sometimes, but there's a, they can show restitution and potentially earn the trip back. So of course, there would be some pretty clear extreme circumstances that would not allow that to happen, but, you know, it does still allow for developmental mishaps and progress and learning opportunities.
I feel like we do have to include that, should get trip insurance.
Yes.
Yes.
We had one student who got the flu last year, like, Sunday night, but they had their insurance, luckily, so.
Do you hope to meet with, like, the grades or the kids going to present it to them, too?
Yeah, I mean, this would be, yeah, this would be part of the meeting in May, the initial family meeting, because we do ask that they're going to return this before they submit their first payment.
I think, based on the fact that you've had an attorney look at it and stuff, I'm comfortable with this.
And I think it's a great idea. While we want every student who wants to go to go, it is also still a privilege.
Absolutely.
We are responsible for them, so they need to be on the best of either.
So do we need a?
Yeah, I would think.
Okay, so you're looking for an actual approval for the contract?
It would make me feel a little better, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you hope the students that go have fun?
Yes, very excited. All right. And finally, I believe my first time speaking with you all, you asked me to try again at getting a BMS homework policy. So in front of you, I have the proposed policy. Just to give you some background, basically what we did, shout-out to my assistant principal, who's amazing at collecting and synthesizing data. We started by looking at every single middle school in the state of New Hampshire's homework policy as a committee and kind of deciding what we liked and what we didn't like. We brought our top five forward to the committee, discussed it, and synthesized those to share out with the staff. Staff then discussed it among their teams. Obviously, foreign language homework looks different than math homework, looks different than phys ed homework. So we had to hash some of those discussions out, but what you have in front of you is the proposed homework policy for Barrington Middle School.
I know you guys have worked really hard to get consistency with syllabi being sent out at the beginning of the year. Is, would that, would you want to include that in here somewhere? I just know you guys worked really, really hard.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we thought that first bullet under teacher responsibilities will clearly communicate homework expectations, including the purpose, content, and due dates. But I could add specifically the word syllabi in there.
I just know you guys worked so hard as teams to.
Absolutely.
Make that commitment.
I will add that.
Is there talk of, so I appreciate the homework emails as a BMS parent. Sometime, I say, do you have homework? And they say, I don't know, but I know, I know.
Yeah.
So is there a, it could be my own kid, it could just be the stage of life they're in, but is, do you know if there's, like, expectations in the classroom, say, you write this down, you keep an agenda book, you?
We try. We do. I would say that is much more consistent in fifth and sixth grade than seventh and eighth grade. Yep. But most teachers have an agenda posted with homework. Yep.
I like it. It's just more clear, I think, and less cluttery than previous findings.
Okay.
It's really great.
And the grading component, component is, I think it's important to call out that there are some classes that just don't give homework regularly, phys ed, for example. But the way this is set up is that there's still going to be a homework category, there just won't be anything in it, so it wouldn't impact their grade positively or negatively.
Tell you, my favorite homework assignment of all time was when my kids had FCS, and Karen Atherton, they had to, they had to plan and prepare a meal and clean up for it. The work she sent home for us to grade them was, my husband and I were in hysterics. My kitchen is pristine, it looks like our 20. It was great.
That's fun.
I did want to just say quickly that, as you mentioned, that fifth to eighth grade is a very difficult time to get your children to tell you, to answer the question, how was school today? What did you do? And so I just wanted to shout out the entire staff, specifically those in the wellness committee that helped with this, and then the two staff members that were leading this, that I heard from multiple children just randomly throughout this weekend, they had such positive feedback, specifically the speaker, but also really, they named specific things that they did, they, and they were all very varied. I mean, it was like a group of 10 kids. And so I just want to say thank you, thank you to them, and please pass that on that they did make a very positive impact. Because again, I often ask my child, my children those questions, and I get, it was fine, nothing happened.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, there could have been like a fire drill, and they won't say, nothing happened. So they clearly didn't want.
I will pass that along, thank you.
Thank you.
Policies are easy, they're second reads and no changes, so.
All right, you want me to just go? All right, now that I don't have to compete with God, to get it out first, get the words out first. All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the following policies for second read, AC, ACA, AC, AC, and ACX.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We need an ACDC.
ACDC.
We could create one.
But there's also, there's already dye.
There's dye. All right, so we're back, we're up to our next opportunity, our last opportunity for public comment for this evening. Again, look to the folks in public, in person. They're all jumping for joy. Anyone online? I don't see any little hands. All right, then.
I make a motion to enter non-public citing two reasons. Our, the first is RSA 91A32C, and the second is 91A32A.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we have to do roll call.
Oh, right.
Speaker, aye.
Laura Taylor, aye.
Neil, aye.
Walker, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Jason, are you the backup note taker?